Meeting to order. Nadi Kelly Tadic operating the meeting tonight. Chair Panay is away from Ireland. And we'll go ahead and start with the. Do we need to read all those directions?
It's up to you.
Okay. Everybody online knows to stay muted and raise your hand when you want to say something, right? So we'll go ahead. City state monthly reports Honolulu Fire Department is up first.
Good evening, my name is Captain Kalu Wolf with the Hula Fire Station. I'll be presenting the monthly statistics for the month of May 2024, last month. In regards to fires, we've had two structure fires, zero wildland brush fires, one nuisance fire, one cooking fire, and two activated alarms where there were no fire. In regards to emergencies, there were thirty seven medical emergencies, zero motor vehicle collisions involving pedestrians, four motor vehicle crashes or collisions, one mountain rescue, one ocean rescue, and one hazardous material incident. As a note, nuisance fires include rubbish fires outside of a structure or vehicle. Our fire safety tip for the month is in regards to power outages. Hawaii is a fire prone, is fire prone with a year round risk for wildfire. Hazardous weather conditions, especially during hurricane season from June first to November thirtieth will increase the risk. The HF D encourages everyone to proactively protect yourself, your family, and your property through advanced planning, understanding, and preparation. In the event of a power outage, remember these safety tips. Firstly, build a fourteen day disaster supply kit. Take an inventory of the items you need that rely on electricity. Plan for batteries and other alternative power sources to meet your needs when the power goes out. Know your medical needs, for instance, devices, refrigerated medicines. A general list is available online at honolulu.gov/DEM. Secondly, using appliances during a power outage. Avoid carbon monoxide poisoning. Generators, camp stoves, charcoal grill should always be used outdoors and at least twenty feet away from windows. Turn off or disconnect appliances, equipment, or electronics that may be damaged during possible momentary power surges or spikes. For more tips and detailed information, you can visit ready.gov/power-outages. And starting July first, the Hawaiian Electric Company HEICO will commence their public safety power shut off, PSPS program to reduce the risk of wildfire. As one component of their three-phase wildfire strategy safety, HEICO may preemptively shut off power in identified high-risk areas during periods of forecasted high winds and dry conditions. This program is being utilized as their last line of defense to keep communities safe and may result in extended power outages. A PSPS could last several hours or up to several days. The HF D and HEICO will continue to work with Board of Water Supply and other city, state, and federal agencies to lessen any impacts from a PSPS. Visit hawaiinelectric.com for more information. That is all I have to present. Anyone has any questions?
First, board members, any questions?
Hi, I'm Lorraine Mutheny, and my question is, how prepared do you think we are for the dry season this year? As you know, in the past, we have had wildfires like EA on the ridge and, you know, and with everything that's been happening, how prepared do you think our community is? Our communities here in the Koholau district.
Well, I can't comment on what the communities are doing. I'm not exactly sure what the communities are doing. But in regards to the fire department, the fire department has upgraded our response so that we're now responding with two engines and a tanker, three units. Before it was just one engine. And also during these red flag warnings, we are also standing up a lot more personnel.
That's good to know. Thank you.
I have a question, I think I know the answer to it. Fires are prohibited any place without permission, is that correct? Outside fires?
Yes, there are certain reasons by which it's permitted. For instance, if it's a religious burning or barbecue, things like that. But outside rubbish burning, unauthorized burning obviously is not permitted.
Okay. So I just want to remind the community of that. Because these winds can really blow hard and cause problems. Any other questions of the community in person? You're back again, okay. Lauren?
I have one more question, and it has to do with the speed bumps. And I hate to put you on the spot, but in a lot of our community meetings, I keep hearing the same concern. And the concern is that your first responders, that with the large number of speed bumps that we have in our area, that it is hindering and slowing down your response. And so I would like to know if you guys have done any research or, you know, because anecdotally, it's really getting talked about as if it is true, and I think we should know.
Any responsive, has us responding over the speed bumps, obviously we'll be slowed down by that because we're not going at the same speeds we weren't once. Where I don't have an answer as in regards to how much it slowed us down. We have not done any personal research, but I can have our CRO get back to you and our Community Relations Office and PIO also get back with a, maybe a more detailed answer for by the next meeting in regards to that question.
Thank you. Okay, we'll give the community in person another chance to ask a question if anyone does. Okay, the community online, and I believe Casey Connor. You've got your hand up.
Thank you. Once again, can you tell us, how are you preparing all the illegal vacation rentals to have a working day disaster response kit for hurricane or tsunami? I don't think they have any clue. And my understanding is there's no kinds of kits, no kinds of preparation, no kind of understanding. And since so many of them are illegal, I don't understand how this is, how you are supposed to help them prepare or they are prepared. It seems like a disaster in the making with more and more and more illegal vacation rentals up our side. Any suggestions or thoughts or anyone working on that? Mahalo.
Thank you, Casey, for that question. I can get back to you on that, that question by next meeting with a, with a more detailed answer. For now, I can basically say that our Community Relations Office is involved with educating the public with such fire safety tips as we're giving at this meeting, which we hope will get out to the communities involving anybody that might be going to these vacation rentals. And I can't comment on what further the community, our CRO office is doing, but I can have them get a detailed answer and have that email to the board.
Mahalo.
You're welcome.
I don't see any other questions online, so we'll, thank you very much for your report.
Right, thank you very much.
Okay, next Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, I'm Officer Jared Atkins with the District Four Community Police Team. The stats for May are, there were two motor vehicle thefts versus one previous month. There were eight burglaries in May versus five the previous month. There were ten thefts in May versus twelve the previous month. There were three car break-ins in May versus ten the previous month. There were zero robberies in May versus zero the previous month. And then compared to last year, there was one less motor vehicle theft this year. There were seven more burglaries this year. There were two more thefts this year. There was one less car break-in this year and one less robbery this year. That's all I have for the stats, I can take any questions or concerns?
Any questions of the board? In person, any questions from the board online? Any questions from the community in person? Any questions from the community online? I don't see any, so we'll go ahead. Thank you very much, Officer.
Thank you.
Next is United States Army. There you are.
Good evening, Sergeant Taylor. My name is Sergeant Taylor, your US Army representative. To begin, we have our June job fair coming up on the twenty fifth at Capile High School. It begins at zero eight thirty in the morning, ends at two P M. We also have the US Army Garrison, they published their training advisory. It was published on the thirty first of May. If you have any questions, I can put the community concern line in the chat. So in June, the Army will continue training in the East Range area with Ranger Jungle Tactics. Small fire, that'll be from the third to the fourteenth, then the sixth through the thirtieth of June, and that'll be day only, six A M. through six P M. We also have aviation training, that'll be the sixth, the eleventh, the thirteenth, and the twenty eighth, day only. Additionally, on Schofield Barracks, there will be artillery and mortar training the first through the twenty fourth of June, day and night live fire. And we will also have demolitions training the fourteenth through the fifteenth of June, that'll be day only. If you want to be added to the training advisory list, I can also put that email in the chat. Going over the Oahu's draft for the EIS publication notification, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mahoy with Eustropak A T L R.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, aloha, I come with the US Army Pacific A T L R. I just wanted to notify the community, mahalo for your time, about our upcoming public, open public comment period regarding our draft, EIS or environmental impact statement regards to Oahu training lands specifically to the Kohuku Training Area, the Kauai Loa or Maho Training Area on Makua Military Reservation. The published EIS was published last week, Friday, on June seventh, which opens up the comment period, which is scheduled to conclude on August seventh later this year. So the community has about sixty days to comment on this. There's going to be several, three meetings, public EIS comment meetings. The first will be on July ninth from six to eight at the Waianae District Park, and then July tenth from six to eight at the Kauai Intermediate School, and then July eleventh from six to eight at the Lelewa High School. So there's several options for submitting comments for folks. They can go directly to the Army's website online, and I'll just say it for folks that are tuning in via the web apps. It's HTTPS at backslash home dot army dot mil backslash Hawaii backslash Oahu EIS. You can also submit comments via the public meetings, written or oral, and then as well as via email. You can email a t l r dash Oahu dash EIS at G seventy dot design, as well as mail in your comments to Oahu A T L R, EIS comments, P O box three four four four, Honolulu, Hawaii, nine six eight zero one dash three four four four. And you also could provide your comments via phone by calling eight oh eight five one five 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 one eight. Specific on these dates though, on July ninth, tenth, and eleventh on there. Outside of that, chair, that's all I have. I'll turn it back over to Sergeant Taylor, if she has any more updates.
No further. Okay, if no further updates, thank you very much, US Army.
Thank you.
Okay, we appreciate it. All right, now we're at government reports, and the first is report for Mayor Bungiarri. Representative Kat Cashner, she's here.
I'm here, I'm here, hello everybody, how you doing?
Welcome back.
Yes, thank you, I'm officially back this week. But it was nice to see some of you in person at the town hall the other week. So to catch up on some of the announcements, I have two announcements. Announcement one, this month's highlights from Mayor's newsletter include, A, Mayor Bungiarri created an Ocean Safety Department and signs the resolution for a voter approved commission. B, an update on improvements to the city's critically important nine one one system. C, a list of resources for Hurricane Preparedness Month, which begins in June every year. D, information about HEICO's Public Safety Power Shut Off Program, which begins on July first. And E, how the city and county of Honolulu is helping to support the Hawaii Food Bank. So the June twenty twenty four edition of the Mayor's Newsletter can be found online, and I'll drop a link in the chat box. The second update is about the town halls, meet your city officials. But Mayor Bungiarri and his team will be on the road to visit communities around Oahu. There's one town hall meeting left, which includes an open Q and A session with Mayor Bungiarri and representatives from twenty five city departments and agencies. The public is encouraged to attend and give suggestions on how this administration can better serve the people of Oahu. And the last town hall is going to be at Waialua Elementary. It's next Thursday, June twentieth at seven P M. It was originally scheduled for the day that we had really crazy weather, so this is the rescheduled, the rescheduled and final town hall. And those are my updates. If there are any questions, I am happy to take them down and get responses for you.
Thank you, Kat. Any questions on the board here in person? Any questions online? Any questions from the community in person? Any questions? Okay, go ahead, Sunny.
Hi, Kat.
Hey, Sunny.
Town hall meeting. I raised the concern regarding the large wind utility setback for the large wind turbines. And I had to leave earlier, but they said that they were going to try and connect me with one of somebody. I just wanted to see if you could follow up and find out who that person would be. Because Bill sixty four is currently, you know, it's moving forward, they had a hearing, second hearing last month. But I wanted to bring this big issue that impacts our community to the awareness of the mayor and see if there's anything that he could support. Maybe even perhaps and do a little tour to understand our community's face.
Okay, so the concern is that Bill sixty four is advancing, the Kuhuku community wants an opportunity to be heard regarding the setbacks with the wind turbines. There was a commitment at the neighbor, at the town hall to get back to you. I will follow up on who needs to do that. And I'll let them know what the concern is about Bill sixty four and that there was an offer to do a tour. Did they get it all?
Yes, that would be great.
Awesome, okay, sounds good, thanks Sunny.
Thank you, Kat.
Are there any other questions from Kat online? Seeing none? Thank you, Kat.
Oh, wait.
Hello, Casey. Hi, sorry, thank you, Kat, so much. Quickly, I didn't know if you had seen that for all of Region Six, the homeless count from Kahalu to Past Turtle Bay, Cavella, they said we only had forty six homeless. That just, I mean, when the community organized it, we actually counted over maybe close to a hundred and fifty years ago, I mean, several years ago before COVID. And many experts think there's about three hundred and fifty. So we're concerned that we won't get the funding that we need because our rural area was hard to count and undercounted. And I know that the mayor went to Washington to get more money for the homeless, but when the count is not accurate, hey, we're not going to get the funds or the money or, before we had a lot of Hawaiians, but pre-COVID, when I did the count with other volunteers, Auntie Lulani and Ronnie Huddy, it was like eighty, eighty-five percent Hawaiian. So that's a real concern for us. Secondly, I just went to the complete streets, while I attended it on Zoom, and their whole program, it's not, it doesn't take into account the issues with our rural community, the many, many deaths and serious traffic accidents. Their whole analysis and solutions is more planned for towns. And I didn't know if someone could take a look at that because, you know, we have choke accidents out here and the way that they're analyzing the data doesn't help us. And third, with the legislature saying the vacation rental is now will be an issue that the city and county can handle. Are there any new initiatives to shut down the illegal vacation rentals to fine them and to make them pay their back taxes? And the new incentives because they're killing this community? Thank you, those are the three things.
Got it, got it, I got all three of them, I'll report back next month.
Mahalo.
Thanks, Casey.
Thank you, I don't see any further questions, okay? We'll vote, thank you very much, Kat.
Thanks, good to see you.
Good to see you. Next is Councilman Matt Wire, are you online? I represented there.
All right, thank you all members of the board, Kelly Anaya from Councilman Matt Wire's office. Just a couple of things. I was told that the Honolulu Siren is working and operational. Did you, did they happen to test it? Did any?
We haven't.
No, yeah. Okay, I was told this morning that it was installed, and so I, I guess they didn't. I guess they're just, they just installed.
We were hoping, we saw some workmen, and I thought that they were doing that, but I haven't.
Yeah. Thank you. They did say that they installed it, so.
Oh, good.
I guess we're just going to wait till next month to test it. Let's see, I'm sorry, I don't have any response for you about real Hawaii experience that we discussed a couple of months back. I'm still waiting to hear back from the department. And then just one legislative update, there is a bill, Bill thirty four, regarding various property taxes. I wanted to mention about, I don't know if this would address some of Ms. Connors' questions about the S T Rs, but this bill will introduce different tiers for residential aid. It's actually increasing the taxable value. So like for tier one, we go up to one point three. Tier two would go up to, well, between one point three and three point five. And then tier three would go, would be in excess of three point five. So it did pass first reading, so it's bill, so it does have a couple more hearings to vote to. Also, in addressing to Ms. Connors, I believe she asked last, I think it was last month, about different legislation that we might be doing. I know the city is working on doing a like an empty homes tax. There is a study, but no timeline has been set, and it's basically to try and see what, encouraging renting the property as opposed to trying to curtail some of those illegal vacation rentals. And that's actually all that I have, if anyone has any questions for a post number, I'd take them on.
Actually, I have a question. I called the council member a few weeks ago. There was a report to me by a community member that it was, there's a stream that comes out of the ELSA electric property next to the shopping center.
Is this the one that runs across to the Ha'ula, that little, it's kind of like a HOA across the highway? Is that the one you're talking about?
It's right next to the shop, Ha'ula Shopping Center. It's thirteen acres, something like that. There was, there is a stream that runs out, and it was black and the oil had a boil.
I'm sorry, just, okay, yes, so my, one of my coworkers did submit that concern to State Department of Health. I believe we have not received a response yet.
Okay.
Yes, we are aware of that one, though. It's kind of like an oily, black thing that was.
I sent a video that he shared with me.
Okay.
And it's a person who lives in that area.
Okay.
And they had taken a video, so he should have sent that on and.
It's been reported to.
There's also the judicial hearing going on to take that property away.
Okay.
And, and the people, attorneys, and possibly the EPA is involved in that.
Okay.
And I hope that that information is forwarded onto that process.
Okay.
So they're.
I'm not sure who we would send that to.
Matt's an attorney, and he should know who's running that judicial hearing.
Right.
It's a judicial foreclosure in process through the city. So I'm sure he can get, in fact, we would like to get an update on that judicial process. I know they can give updates periodically. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of the board?
Um, I do.
Wait just a second. Here in person, anyone board? Okay, all right, board member online? Who is it?
Hi, Sunny Unga. I wanted to bring bring back to the attention of some issues or upcoming things that we, Kohuku specifically is going to be dealing with or, you know, facing with. So we got word about the Turtle Bay development. So I wanted to see if Councilmember Matt Wire could meet with our community and Turtle Bay to discuss this development that's coming soon. From what I hear, they're permitted to do phase one. I don't, do you know if Councilmember Matt Wire is aware of that?
Yes, he is, we have been getting calls quite frequently lately. And so there are a couple of things that we are working on. I will let him know, though.
Okay, because in the central obligation, I believe that Kohuku and the community is to have a seat at the table during these discussions and planning and such. So we want to make sure that our community has a voice. And in addition, I want to reiterate the importance of the wind turbine setback. I was very concerned in our last meeting, in our last second hearing, there was lots of discussion on grandfathering existing projects and also not only that allowing repairs and maintenance that are not within their permits. So for example, installing bigger blades that will inherently change the setback of existing turbines that are currently in place. And so just wanted to reiterate that our opposition to any of that. And we want to request a meeting to sit down with Matt Wire to specifically discuss those terms and see if we can figure out how we can move forward and maybe even perhaps meet with the new D P P D P P director, because now she's new, and it's, it's just a change in leadership. So it's just difficult because we've had this discussion for four years. But anyways, just one on record.
Not a problem. Okay, any other questions, Casey?
Sorry, I didn't know, Atalina was going to follow up with, she had asked before about Kahale's and for the homeless community, and I didn't know if that was a possibility because now that the homeless count is so low and it looks like we have no homeless. But they were small communities for our homeless, our houseless to get the help they need. Number two for, is there any? Can you look again at the general plan and if there's anything on carrying capacity with this new Turtle Bay expansion? can you look again at the general plan and if there's anything on carrying capacity with this new Turtle Bay expansion? You know, how much, how many people, how many cars, how much water do we need? Can we look, is there anything that he can do with the carrying capacity and to look at the carrying capacity in the area with the Turtle Bay expansion in particular? And thirdly, with the vacation rentals, it looks like we're short enforcement that maybe people are getting a notice, but nobody is being closed down. And there, there's terrible problems with local families pushed and priced out with these vacation rentals. The, the enrollment in Kohuku is declining. So is there anything you can revisit that and that help to get more funding or more DPP staff that will actually work on this? Mahalo.
There's actually only two inspectors or investigators for the STR division. I know they're doing the best that they can. You know, I did go on to the DPP website earlier today, just from like the Kualua area up to like Kohuku. I mean, there was over a hundred NOBs that have been issued, but you know, as far as, you know, trying to keep them shut down, I mean, that's like a whole other situation. So they are working on it. Please know that. I mean, I know they're doing the best they can. There are even multiple NOOs, which, notice of orders, which is when the fines start accruing, when they don't address the NOBs, but you know, it's, it's a process. So thank you for your patience. They are working on it.
Okay. All right. Would he consider a bill to hire more because this is really damaging our, our housing for local families? Mahalo.
Thank you. I will let him know.
Save no more questions. Okay. Can I just make a comment? And this is piggybacking on the meeting that was with the mayor of the town hall meeting where a local gentleman, fifteen generations here stood up and talked about the dangers of enforcing this so stringently that we are punishing our local families because there are local families who have short-term rentals. Some of them, they are in, well, most of them, it is their private home. And so they are using it, they'll, like in this gentleman, he spoke and he had a garage and they fixed it up and it helped them pay their mortgage and due pays. He's already gotten the threat of the ten thousand. I believe he said he got the fine. So I think that we need to understand that when we talk about what we're doing with STRs, when that initially started, everybody has this vision that all these people are absentee landlords from the mainland. Those people are not getting affected right now. But the locals who are doing this in, in trying to be able to afford to live in Hawaii, that's who here I see in our area that's being punished. And I thought he addressed that very eloquently to the mayor and asked the mayor to, to look at this. So I understand that we do have a lot of short-term rentals, but I would ask that we just step back and realize that if it's a local and they own their own homes and they're doing that, I don't think it's fair that we expect local homeowners to solve the houseless problem. And so I just ask that we maybe just consider how it's affecting because what, if those local people and that particular, his HPD and his wife's teacher, if they sell and move to the mainland, HPD is not going to get the replacement for the teacher because there's such a likelihood that no local family will be able to afford. So some local families, and that's not the only one, I just bring that up because it's more public. But I, I just think maybe if we could think before we just automatically chuck off everybody's head. Mahalo.
No problem. Thanks.
Okay. No further questions, so.
No, the government's over and over again about the vacation rentals. And then, what she was asking, an individual, she didn't leave. And he said, they don't have enough personnel to catch the ones illegally. Now, if the city would give the people the license so they can do it legally, why is so hard about it? I don't think it's that difficult. And he said they don't have enough personnel to catch the one that's doing it illegally. When I got, when I was trapped in the army, I got that piece of paper that said, come follow me. I was trapped and I had no choice. With the vacation rentals, they have choices. If they go down, you want to find the license, why can't the city give them? Because they will be paying taxes. But they always say, they come up with some kind of answers, then I'm not satisfied, that's why I'm speaking up. Now, I've heard this thing over and over. The community association, I've been bought. Every time illegal vacation rent.
Marvin.
It's illegal, why don't they make it legal?
Marvin, you have thirty more seconds, Department.
You would have to pay extra taxes. But if you don't do.
Not all of them do though. I will let Councilmember know.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you. Next up, it's the U.S. House of Representatives, Congresswoman Jill Tukuda's staffer. Our Jill.
Hi, good evening. Kendra Uishi for Congresswoman Jill Tukuda's office. I owe you a few responses from a couple of meetings ago. I'll run through those. I was asked about the status of the legislation pertaining to the Affordable Connectivity Program. So as you know, the ACP program basically ran out of funding and so their Congresswoman Tukuda has signed on to bipartisan legislation, HR six nine two nine. As of yet, there's no action has been taken on that bill. She has also signed on to several letters to support continued funding for the ACP program. The other question I was asked was an update on the Ko'olau Loa Community Resilience Hub funding. So, so good news to report. So Rep. Tukuda did have a request for just under five point four million dollars for the resilience hub that was included in the appropriations, appropriations package that was passed by Congress and signed by the president. So good news for the community there. Let's see. I was also asked about micro grants for Hawaiian education and how much funding for Ko'olau Loa. And I think I mentioned at the time that it is, you know, kind of hard to disaggregate grant funding by specific communities. However, our, my, our awesome ledge team was able to provide me a little bit of information regarding Native Hawaiian education program funds within the U.S. Department of Education and that in the fiscal year 2023, there were twenty-four new NHEP grants that were awarded to community-based organizations totaling about thirty-three point two million dollars. Several of those awardees are planning to use funds to support educational programming in Winward, Oahu, although not explicitly for Ko'olau Loa, including UH and Partners in Development. And the next grant-making cycle for NHEP begins in fiscal year 2025. And lastly, I was asked whether there were the opportunities for federal funds for preservation of the Marconi property. I, there's some, you know, variables as to whether, you know, it's, it's a qualifying organization, but community project funding could possibly be an option. You know, depending on whether, you know, the criteria is met. However, the application window for community project funding for the U.S. House has closed for the year, so the next window would open next year. And for this month's report, Congresswoman has been pretty busy in DC over the last few weeks. She is a member of the Agriculture Committee and they spent some, quite a bit of time on the markup of the farm bill. So that has passed the committee, but not yet passed the full House. And as a member of the Armed Services Committee, she also worked on the National Defense Authorization Act or the NDAA. And just a couple of points to highlight for NDAA, she advocated and secured provisions directing the Department of Defense to improve efforts to combat the spread of invasive species in Hawaii. And also a provision to require stricter reporting requirements for child abuse and harm at military child development centers. And lastly, she'll be in the district next week, attending a few meetings and possibly some visits to healthcare centers before returning back to DC the following week. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Uh, one question from the board here. When you were talking about the CPF funding for communities and nonprofits, is my understanding from Jill Tukuda's office that the House passed a bill that would not enable nonprofits to receive that funding in 2025? Is that correct?
Um, I don't know the exact mechanism. I don't know all the, you know, the intricate details, but I do. We worked with nonprofits were not able to apply for the CPF this year. I'm not sure whether that was done by law or some other regulation, but yes, nonprofits were not, for whatever reason, did not qualify to apply.
And that's just in the House?
That is my understanding. I would have to double check for sure. So I can, I can check in with people who are smarter than me on that.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Questions from the board in person or the board online? Atalina.
Hello, I have a question. I'm not sure if this question is for Jill or if there's someone else I'm supposed to ask it to, but I was just wondering about the reinstatement of benefits for Kofa citizens and was Congresswoman Jill Tukuda, did she take part in that?
Um, you know, I'm not sure how that came to be. Are you talking about with regard to FEMA? And, or, or is this something?
So in general, so there is a CIFA twenty twenty-four act where all federal benefits are now being reinstated to our Kofa citizens. So that includes SNAP, MedQuest, Social Security benefits. I do have a question concerning this and I was wondering if you're the right person to ask.
You know, why don't I put my email address in the chat and then maybe we can contact you offline to get some more information if that's okay?
No problem.
Okay, I will put my contact in the chat right now.
And Atalina, when you get the information, please share it. Okay. Any other questions for Jill Tukuda's office? Of course. Casey.
Yeah, of course. Thank you so much, Kendra, for looking into the Hawaiian education grant money. Is there any way we can get thirty-three point two million? Wow. I didn't realize that much is going into Winward and our side. Is there any way we can get a breakdown? Because in the past, it's a lot of education money, when I looked at it, was going to staff at UH Manoa and very few to actual programs in our area. And I would love the community to take a good look at that. And thank you so much if you can give us the breakdown that you looked at. I think that'd be really helpful for the community as a whole to look at. And secondly, I didn't know if you were aware, the annual homeless count is actually by HUD, Housing Urban Development out of DC. They are supposed to oversee it. So for our area to only, the experts now say only have forty-six homeless? That's just, I mean, it's shameful. It's ridiculous. We're not going to get the funds or the help. Is there any way that she can also look into that to make sure that the, the count and the representation are done well? She had come, Jill had come before to many of our Winward Homeless Alliance volunteer meetings. And she was aware that Winward is so wooded, so large that it's very, very difficult to count and you need to organize a lot of community members. I mean, Auntie Ualani did such a great job, Ronnie Buddy, and and we had people at every single community. And if we don't do that, we're not going to get the count, we're not going to get the funding. So I didn't know if she could take another look at that. She, she did years ago when she was a state senator. And because I'm very concerned about that and that, that houseless, homeless families, locals who are quietly homeless aren't going to get the services they need without more oversight. Mahalo.
Thank you, Casey.
Yeah, if I could just, oh, I'm sorry. Could I just clarify real quick on one of Casey's questions? For regarding the NHEP, the thirty-three million, that's, I believe it's statewide, so I'm sorry. But that was all for Winward. I will, I will see if I can find some kind of a breakdown on how that was distributed.
Thank you.
Thank you. If that's all the questions, then we'll close out with Jill Tukuda's office. Thank you very much. And
Thank you.
Move on to the Governor's representative, Crystal Keelha. Yeah. Is she here? No, no rep. Okay. Again, we'll move on to State Senator Brendan Woss's office.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, before I start, I should probably reach out to, or someone should probably reach out to the Governor's office because Crystal's hasn't been with the Governor's office for, I think, the past three months now.
Yeah, I'll be trying to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, members of the Neighborhood Board, Chairperson and fellow community members. My name is Elizabeth Tavak. I'm here to present the month report on behalf of Senator Awah. Not a long report tonight or this month. So this month, there are a few ongoing matters we're addressing within the state, including one that was raised during the recent mayor's town hall meeting, but also raised tonight from Dadi. The issue concerns the, the black water discharge from the storm drainage in Ha'ula. Senator Awah and I took a look, we went out there, took pictures of the water that was coming out of the storm drain opposite the shopping center. Following discussions with the, with the Clean Water Branch from the Department of Health, it was determined that the substance is not oil, but in fact, an organic filler from the neighboring properties, but the Department of Health actually had requested time to collaborate with the property owner to rectify the situation, plus all of the judiciary matters that's currently happening. So we've kind of let that, we've kind of left that alone until they get back to us. But additionally, our office will be arranging a town hall meeting to address concerns raised by numerous constituents regarding the coconut rhinoceros beetle problem. Details of this event will be communicated to the community soon. We're just waiting on a few players to get back to us, including the Department of Agriculture. And as well as a venue, we most likely will be having it in probably one of the schools as Um, and as well as a venue, we most likely will be having it in probably one of the schools as um a lot of the community centers are booked out to like July for graduation parties and whatnot. Um, but again, the details of the event will be communicated to the community as soon as we get more information. But pretty much this concludes my report, but I'm available to take back any questions or concerns.
Any other questions? The board are in person? Okay, Casey, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Elizabeth. I had asked if um it's possible for the Senator to look in. He did such a poignant video on vacation rentals, if he was able to look at the the tax problems with them or the lack of um paying tax and TAT. I'm specifically, many of, most of us are specifically concerned with the whole unit, not with a family renting a room, though we would love them to rent a room to a visiting teacher or a new nurse if it's possible, or a young person starting out. We're very concerned about them. The vacation rentals and the apartments that are whole units that are rented out um and the tax issues that they are not paying TAT and we don't know how they're paying their taxes on on um the, the huge rents that they're getting from vacation rentals. Do you know if he is able to look into that? Um, that would be really helpful for us and a follow-up on his poignant video. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. See, I will go back to Senator Awal in regards to the tax side of it all. Um, in regards to the short-term rentals, I know that we were going to work together with um Congressman Matt Wires at his office in regards to the specific short-term rentals in the community. Um, there's still that ongoing, there's still that ongoing work that's happening in regards to the ones across the PCC. Um, I know that they've actually stopped, either stopped, or they've lessened the amount of people that's been using that short-term rental. Um, but we're still waiting back on DPP as well as that family that runs that, that STR. But in regards to the tax side of it, I will go back to Senator Awal, so he can take a look into it and see who he needs to contact in order to get that information. We'll report back next month.
Mahalo.
Okay, I, I'll just add, Elizabeth, if you're still there, that just for your information, uh, the Ha'ula community and Ko'olau community have set up already a coconut rhinoceros beetle workshop presentation on June the eighteenth at six PM here at the Ha'ula Community Center. Because uh people in our community have said this is a terrible problem here and that we all need to work together. So uh again, that's June eighteenth at six PM here at Ha'ula Community Center. I don't think you can do too many of them, so go ahead and have the other one too. Okay.
Yes, could I, who could I contact in regards to who's setting this up? Would this be with you?
Our nonprofit, Hui'oh Ha'ula at the
Got it. Okay, Senator Awal or myself will reach out to you to get more information. Um, so that we can either collaborate together or have it separately moving forward. Because we're looking to have it sometime next week, but we'll contact Dadi.
Okay, that'd be great. Dadi? Yes, hi, uh, this is Lorraine from Punta Lu and actually tomorrow from three-thirty to four-thirty, um, Commandman Schools is hosting a workshop on the coconut rhinoceros beetle and it is in Punta Lu at five-three dash two-seven-zero Commandman Highway and it is free, no registration required. So that's on the fourteenth and Ha'ula's is on the eighteenth.
Thirty from cram schools in
Yes.
Five-three-two-seven-zero Commandman Highway, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Mahalo.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we'll move on to, uh, thank you very much. Uh, State House Representative Sean Whelan's office, their staffer. Do we have anyone? Doesn't seem that we have anyone online there, so we'll move on to um board business. You don't find anyone? Um. So are we ready for that?
Alfred, do you have the letter?
Board letter regarding the inclusion of communities and planning and installation of speed bumps.
Yeah, so at the last board meeting that we had, uh, we had George Abseda here for the Highway Administrator for Department of Transportation. So he presented to us and suggested that we email him, call him, so we're trying to get the word out to the community. And if they have an opinion regarding the speed bumps, um, that they email. Uh, because he said he gets very little uh input on or feedback regarding the speed bumps and he hasn't heard anything really negative about it. And so we, uh, so basically, we encourage everybody to email. I have created an email.
Look at that email.
Yeah.
George Abseda, yeah, the, the Highway Administrator that came last night.
Have an email address that you can announce?
I do. I do.
If we're gonna email him.
One second. His email address is georgge dot abseda is A B C E D E at hawaii.gov. I don't have, I'm not on.
Who else? Is that Lorraine you wanted to get? Put it in the chat. Thank you. Okay.
Um, so as a draft, so uh at the end of the meeting, Pana had asked me to uh draft a letter, so I, I just sent him the letter that I wrote to Mr. Abseda. Um, regarding my thoughts on the speed bumps. Now, this is just a draft, uh, this is just something that I used. Um, and I believe Anson sent it out earlier today or yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yep. So this is just a draft. If anybody has comments on what you want me to include, I definitely did not include, but I can alter it. Um, the suggestion of including communities in the planning and installation. In the original letter that I put out, I asked them to review the existing ones because I think it's um excessive. Like we have the, the most dense placement of speed bumps on the island um in a very short stretch of la, of area of highway, so um, I will edit the draft to include uh some wording around we believe that communities should be part of the planning and placement of the speed bumps.
Okay.
So if anybody from the, so essentially, the draft letter is a draft letter that I believe that we want to send out to all of yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, it's in your email. It's a draft letter that we would send out to the state leadership, basically.
Right. And it is true that he got a lot of comments from people in the community. And when he followed up and sent us a list as we requested of where they all are and where they're planning to put them in the future. He didn't take one off after all of those comments. So that's why there is a request for a formal process for communities to be more involved and have a voice in that process. So.
There's six more planned in our community.
Yes.
Oh, uh, he, he told us six, I think. He had six, I think, aside from the last.
He's, he sent a list that was longer than six after the meeting. I'm sure. So, yes, also, I find that interesting. Of course, I think our community meeting was before the mayor's because the mayor got lamb-glasted on the speed pump and said, it's not me, it's the state, it's DOT. But at, he promised us that he would talk to DOT and let that sentiment, you know, be expressed. So I, I'm in favor of that. Um, Anson put it up. I was gonna put it up, but Anson.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay.
And I can send you his, I can send you a picture of his business card and if you want to post it as well. It has his cellphone number, his email address, like you can
Yeah, send that to him. Let's take it.
Yeah. He said he was happy to receive feedback on this.
What, what is his title?
Highway Administrator.
Okay.
Or DOT.
Okay, it's a comment on this, the next item. Uh, uh, Atalina, summon.
Sorry, I just had a comment. Um, is it Alfred that's speaking?
Yes.
Oh, Alfred, I have a, a suggestion to add to the letter that you're writing. Could you include something in there that talks about systemic racism and how all of these speed bumps are only in rural communities from Ko'olau? We have so many speed bumps, but once you go from Kohuku north shore way, hardly any speed bumps. All the speed bumps are focused in rural areas where we have Title I schools, where we have low-income families. And this is disconnection.
Yep, I will put that in there.
Alfred, are you bringing a draft next meeting and with all the changes are?
Yeah, I think we want to know, we wanted to get input in this meeting and then I'll go and revise it. Send it out to everybody on the board. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, now this is, it's in your board already.
No, 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 no. We wanted to get input. So Pana just said, give me the draft or what you did and then we can have input for other things. So Atalina, I'm gonna edit that and pop it in there. Yes, yeah. Can we do it over email?
I don't know.
You just get input, not, not to burden that, yeah, not burdening on it, but just getting input.
Uh, Sunny.
Sunny, did you have some?
Yes, I just wanted to piggyback and add a little bit more on the importance of the community input. The reason being is, you know, when there's a disconnect with the community, specifically our community has just one road in and out and it's not like town where you have multiple routes you can take. And so you have to look at the impacts of the pros and the cons and negative and the positive of installing these speed bumps. And in addition, you know, sometimes, you know, they think what the one solution is to put the speed bumps and that's gonna solve the problems of safety and this and that. But that is not the only solution to safety. We have, you know, have these roads with potholes that are issues that have been going on for a long, long time that has not been addressed and continue to not be addressed. And we have um a lack of pedestrian pathways and bike paths, right? So the lack of those things also in correlation with these different road hazards also make it really dangerous. So, you know, um, what the director might think be the solution for the community may not be the right solution because they're looking at just one thing that may work for another community and imposing that onto our community without the community consultation and the community input. So the solution has to be a holistic approach. It cannot just be a one solution for this, this complex issue. It has to be addressing the potholes, increasing, uh, maybe, you know, um pedestrian bike path and, and, and stuff like that. So I just wanted to put it out there that we need to come with a holistic approach involving the communities, so that's community-centered, community-empowered and initiated by the community.
Thank you, Sunny. Okay, is there any more? No, enough. This is board meeting. This is board business. Okay. No, this is board distance. Okay, all right, are we complete? Okay, so we're gonna go ahead with our presentations this evening. That's the next item. Oh, sorry, Matt. On the last issue, uh, that was a board meeting and it's close to just board discussion. We got lots of comments in the last meeting, so from, from the community. Uh, I'm sorry, so we'll go on to, what did you say?
Selection of
Okay, uh, selection of the Ko'olau Loa Neighborhood Board Delegate to the Kohuku Community Fund Committee. Sunny, did you have something to say?
Oh, sorry, was this about the community, Kohuku Community Fund?
Yes.
Yes, um, uh, I, Pana asked me to see if there's anybody in our community that would be a good fit to serve on the Advisory Committee for the Kohuku Community Fund. And we, um, I wanted to nominate Ke'hao Santiago from Kohuku to serve on um, on the board. Um, if I can give a little bit of information, she is a dedicated and accomplished individual, deeply rooted in the Ko'olau Loa community. She has been a cherished member for forty-five years. She is also a proud graduate of Kohuku High School. And her commitment to her community is evident through professional and personal endeavors. She received her master's degree from the University of Hawaii and became a licensed social worker serving the communities on island. She was a director for twenty years at Queen Leleu Kalani Children's Center in Punta Lu and worked as a consultant for a community. Um, and she's also a beautiful mom of four children and family who continues to serve God and the community. So um that would be my nomination, Ke'hao Santiago.
What's the process with this?
Oh, this one, I'm not sure if this is for that. It's not related to the board, but if you guys approve her, uh.
How about, uh, we'll just say, I, we'll go down and start with Lorraine. Can you clarify what that Kohuku community funding is about?
Yes. Well, yeah, Kohuku Community Fund, um, it's a grant that's specifically for, um, to benefit the Kohuku community. And um this is from James Campbell. He created this foundation to um give back to our Kohuku community. And so Hawaii Community Foundation is managing this grant uh for uh managing Kohuku Community Fund and as part of um the decision-making, you know, when they receive the applications and they discuss, you know, the entities um and the nonprofits and, and, and the amount that they should award on the community. Um, they, they have the Advisory Committee um as part of that um con- consultation and decision-making process. So my understanding is, is that Ke'hao Myers, who is the grant manager for Kohuku Community Fund, um overseeing Kohuku Community Fund from Hawaii Community Foundation, had asked Ko'olau Loa Neighborhood Board um to make a nomination and Pana had asked if I um, if there was somebody in the Kohuku community that we thought would be a good fit. So that's kind of the background.
Thank you. I'll just add that this is frequently done in communities. There is a set aside by a large foundation for funding for a specific community and Hawaii Community Foundation has several communities that have response and they administer it. Although, I, nothing, I. Okay, so, um. I, I, okay, two seats?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, is, can we, we have four?
Oh, yes.
Okay, Sunny and Atalina, are you voting aye?
Yes, aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that's completed?
Yep.
Very good. Thank you all very much. All right, presentations tonight. Uh, there's two presentations, one on the special management area SMA permit for fifty-five three-three-seven. MAMA Highway, presenter Steve Turley, and we will hold you to the eight minutes. Okay, thank you.
If you'll go ahead.
Thank you, uh, for the, I'm Steve Turley. I, uh, my wife is a teacher, um, at BYU in Utah. She got the opportunity to come to BYU in La Jolla and, uh, and to teach there. We were looking for, uh, and, uh, she has some unique disabilities and, uh, uh, advanced Parkinson's, uh, sclerosis and rheumatoid arthritis, which make it very difficult for her to maneuver. When we had the opportunity to buy a piece of property, the property was, uh, you can go to the next slide. Uh, the existing, uh, homes on it did not, uh, would not accommodate her disability. So those were the three homes that are, that we own on, uh, uh, at fifty-five three-three-seven. Where the highway and, uh, our SMA permit request is to, um, take down those three duplexes. And the first phase of what we want to do is to add, uh, two, if you go to the next slide, and the next one again, uh, is to add two houses, um, towards the beach. That's our first phase, our second, and we would be in one of those houses. Our second phase would be to build duplexes, um, towards the highway. Hope is to provide, is not to displace, uh, uh, renters. We are working very hard, uh, now. Uh, as the, the five renters that are in those three duplexes, we have found alternative housing for three of the five. The other two are getting some significant financial help to be able to find, uh, uh, alternative housing, uh, locally. And, uh, and our hope is, is to, uh, is to provide an upgrade in housing. Uh, not, not monster houses, not short-term rentals, um, uh, long-term rentals and the, um, uh, let me see, check my notes real fast. The question was brought up at the La Jolla Community Association, which I was grateful for. Um, the direction that we had been encouraged to do is to do some larger, um, houses for, for rentals of multi-generational, um, families, uh, to be able to live in them. And, and some of the feedback that we got was that that might not be right. And, uh, and we should rethink the possibility of making smaller units. Um, uh, we're looking into that. It was a difference of opinion that, that I'm grateful for this process that's educated us as to, uh, as to what's best for the community. That's it.
Any questions from the board in person? Go ahead.
My top one, um, I'm aware of that property and you're displacing people that have rented there. And you're going to tell us that that is going to, that you're not gonna do STRs, that you're going to do long-term rentals. For whom? Because I look at that and I know it's across from PCC and I know it's got my bathtub beach. I know what it's, where it is. And there, the cost for you to build and do all of this, there's no way that you would be able to, to rent those um, to local people. And, and I'm just, I'm, I'm confused. Also, your, your lead-in thing was that your wife had special ability, you know, issues with Parkinson's. And I, I can't help but say, so she's gonna have four homes? And, and I don't mean to be facetious, but if you're leading in with that as a justification for what you're doing, I don't think that that justifies where you're going.
Those are very fair questions. Um, this has been a, an iterative process. Uh, when we started going down this road, the intent was to have a place for my, for my wife to live. Um, as we, as we worked towards that development option, the development option included a house for us. And, and the zoning encouraged us to have seven units or allow for those seven units. And so as we tried to design the site, I'm a contractor and, and a developer on the mainland. And, and when we looked at the site, and we were, we were strongly encouraged by, by, um, strongly encouraged to enhance the housing stock that's available. These homes are eighty-plus years old and they're, they're very tired. And there's an aspect of, 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 sure, uh, the, the long-term rental housing that just doesn't exist. And so as we move forward, and I do sincerely appreciate your, your question, we had the Teotihuacan that lived in two of these units. And when they talked about multi-generational housing, it was an opportunity that I hadn't considered. But they talked about, uh, about a mother living with them who's aging. They talked about children, married children living with them. And, and hence our appetite for these larger duplex units that we intend to build in that second phase. A, a larger home, yes, but consolidating families and, and consolidating the, the various rents of those different families and we put paying in different places, that did provide us the opportunity to, to in that aggregate, to charge more for rent, but then to allow those people to, to live together in, in, in dignity. And, uh, and I, and I, and I want to emphasize that. We've had the opportunity, um, we've taken the opportunity to, to purchase the house immediately to the south with the Teotihuacan. And so the opportunity now is for them to live, we've made the opportunity available to, for them to, to have their own house and to, and to have their own families move in with them, uh, in that, in that house. It's, it is not cheap. It is, it is, it is extremely expensive. And yet, and yet I realize that, I'm sorry, I believe that there's a trade-off. For us to have the opportunity to live here, we need to provide housing for, uh, replacement housing for some of the locals.
Any other questions from the board?
I was just curious what your time scale for this project is. Yeah, you know, how long is it gonna take you and?
We, I, I, I wish DPP could answer that question. We have been, uh, we anticipated to be able to move forward quickly. We understand that this SMA process will get us through to about December. And if the, if the permitting takes anywhere from a year to a year and a half, we would, we're prepared to break that, break drought as quickly as we can with this first phase. And as soon as we're done with the, the EA phase, to be able to, um, uh, to work on that second phase. So as quick as we can, but we're ready. If, if someone's ready to process our application, um, that'll be our, our, our holdup.
I have a question. Um, you said there are two homes. One will be your house.
Correct.
And, um, and what's the square footage of that house?
They're, they're just sort of thirty-five hundred square feet.
Okay, so each house is thirty-five hundred square feet?
That's correct.
Okay, and in, in the second home, not your home, uh, it's a duplex, so there would be two families living in there?
If you'll a little bit is drawing that I've got up on the board, those two homes that are part of this SMA permit application, those are both single-family homes.
Oh, okay.
The, if you, Anton, if you could migrate that a little bit, okay, uh, those two spaces towards the highway would be where we anticipate the second phase where two duplexes would be there. So three additional, I'm sorry, so four additional dwelling units. And the request that was made for us to consider from the, um, LCA was that we consider going, uh, doing what the zoning allows and perhaps putting in, um, uh, the five units there. Smaller, smaller in size rather than the bigger ones that we considered.
Five units total?
Correct.
In those two space?
In those, in those two grand spaces, there would be, there would be a duplex and then three units attached there. Trying to get those smaller, um, uh, so that they.
More spe, more rentals.
That's correct.
Okay, and they're not vacation?
They are not vacation rentals.
Any other questions?
Stephen, the LCA meeting, uh, was brought up by another LCA member, a fourth member, or that you consider having a right-of-way access down to, not to beach, down to the beach side because, uh, your, your tenants now are, are super kind in allowing people to come through. Uh, whether the orients going out for fishing, whether their families going out to beach, things like that. Um, there is no other right-of-way on that area. Have you given any thought? I know it's only been a week if so. Um, but I'm wondering if you have any comment.
Alfred, you ask a really good question. If, if you'll notice on the very bottom of that picture, um, there is a, there is a a STEM driveway or a, a fly lot that acts as to the houses immediately to the south. The Teotihuacan and I are, are partnered on that property and, uh, and we are exploring those options to be able to use that, uh, accessway, um, for, for beach access.
Okay. Any other question?
Is the board, everyone has, okay, community member local, go ahead.
Five. Tenants that, that are there now, we anticipate that with the larger-sized, um, uh, places, we would be able to invite additional people in that, in that multi-generational setting uh, and also include the house that we anticipated building.
So no number of, no real number of, how many additional people, which is the duplex? Three small housing plus the two that you have on you.
I, I, I can tell you, it'll be more than there are today because of the size of the units. Being able to accommodate more than one individual renter. And one of the units that we have there now, um, is a, is a stu, studio apartment, for lack of a better word. That family, uh, that studio could be, will be included as one of the other units. So there'll be more than one living in that additional unit.
As, um, usually for like, with the plus, you know, the occupation or how many people could actually be in this room. So let's say you've been three duplexes. Minimum three people to fit in room. So you're having at least additional twenty people there versus the current five. Sorry. So usually when you build a designed room, it's designed for a certain volume of people. Like for instance, you said that studios could fit accommodating three people. Usually when you build these architectures, you have the volume of personnel that actually live in this unit. So if you do not have that number, I'm asking if you have that number. What if, what is the maximum volume of people can actually be in your box?
I, I, the, when, when it talks about rooms, I can tell you, in, in one of the duplexes that we have, um, there are, there are three, there are three bedrooms in the, uh, in, in, one of the duplexes that is a bill, building four bedrooms. Um, again, anticipating to be shared rooms that multi-generational families, that's the, uh, uh, the volume of room, I, I don't anticipate putting three people in a room unless there are little children living in a bunk bed, I guess.
Uh, just wondering if you feel like.
Stick your name first, sorry.
Name is Jacob. So my question was, let's say you're occupancy, you're, you're, you have the three houses for fifteen people. But the additional building, is that gonna be double that amount of people there of thirty people? You know, families to studios? Cause as I'm just saying, like, now you're fitting more people in a smaller section.
Uh, third question, uh, I, I can talk as to rooms, how people use those rooms. Uh, if they were, if they're renting, I, I can't speak to that. I, I could estimate that there's gonna be an increase in the amount of people that will be accommodated there to probably twenty-five percent more, maybe fifty percent more if someone were to push it, if, if somebody were to push that. But, um, uh, anything more than, than, than fifty percent more, I'd be surprised if somebody wanted to live that. And that's our, and that's our opportunities as a landlord to be able to limit those kind of activities.
Okay.
See, I, I appreciate what you're trying to do. I appreciate the, the process for um, providing more housing for what we call local families, the specimen and, and rebuilding. Um, of course newer dwelling units, um, for those families. The, the concern that, that I have is relative to the location in terms of, it's, it's oceanfront, it's, it's a very expensive piece of property that, the building of it's gonna be expensive. Um, and I think we'll need to sort this a little bit in, in the LCA meeting. How do we, how are we gonna maintain the affordability based on the placement of where it's at? And still right now, the units are old, uh, they're tired. They don't command the higher rents that, um, that could be gotten on with, with oceanfront property. Um, and I heard the amount of rent that you're charging right now and I don't think you are anywhere close to what you could be charging, which is, I think, fantastic. Um, it speaks probably what you want to do. But do we have a commitment from you that these units that are gonna be rented to locals will be at a locally affordable price? Is it? Do you understand what I'm saying? And I'm not selling you to a price, but the, the idea that you will charge a rent that is going to be affordable for, for a local kind of thing. Does that make sense?
It, it, it does. And the answer is yes. And the, and the way that I can say that with, with confidence is the market only allows what the market can allow. And, uh, and if, and if, and if I'm, uh, uh, I, Alfred, I think it's fair, it's fair to say, presently, we're charging well less than half the market rate at, it's been our choice to do that. We didn't have to, but we chose to do that. Doesn't, economics doesn't have to win out for one person. It can win out, there can be multiple winners in this situation. So, so Alfred, my hope is to provide an opportunity for this community to benefit from, uh, from what we're doing here. And it, it, it is, it's a trade-off. I'm asking to be part of your community. I'm asking to upgrade the housing stock in your community, just a few units at a time. And, uh, and with, with Ernest's, I realize that that's a trade-off and my commitment is to provide that long-term housing. There's no, no appetite for me to be, uh, in the short-term rental business. There, there, when I went down this road, um, uh, I, I thought that, that selling units or selling these buildings would be the prudent thing to do. Um, until I was educated, uh, uh, that, that not all the locals can afford those. And so we had to pivot, we had to change. And it was, uh, financially, it's probably not the best, uh, thing to do. But sometimes that's our opportunity to, uh, to provide people, uh, the opportunity to live in dignity, to, uh, to have a, a place that they can afford. We chose to do that. And we will, and Alfred, my commitment is that we will do that in the future.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Uh, Mr. Turley, my name is Catherine Heath. I'm a resident of Ho'oula. Um, congratulations on your ability to purchase such a lot and, uh, ideally provide, uh, housing for people. My concern is more directly from the renderings that have flashed by us is the proximity of any building to the ocean and also, um, this rock wall. Um, you know, it seems that the structures look to be a little closer to the ocean than might be advisable. I have, uh, lived in my particular home for over twenty-five years now and watched a, a similar amount of earth, if not more, disappear from the beach park down below me. And I think you should anticipate such loss and your renderings do not appear to do that. I also wonder if you are aware of the law, which says the highest wash of the highest wave at the highest surf season is, uh, public access. Just so you know, doesn't matter who owns it, that's the law. Uh, and also what's, so my, my big concern is about that. Also, my big concern is about that rock wall and why you're moving so close to the ocean. Are you aware of how much land we're losing? You're not from here, you said that, so what are your thoughts on that? Because you're not allowed to reinforce the ocean seawall.
Catherine, thanks for that question. It gives me the opportunity to tell you that that revetment was put in in the late 1950s and has been granted the easement from the DLNR for that revetment to stay in place.
Yes, but not be reinforced.
That's correct.
That's just, I'm wondering if you're aware of that. I know it's there, but it also looked a little bit more beefed up in your renderings. I can only go on the rendering you presented. And that rock wall is almost public access during high water. You do know that, right?
Yes, indeed. The certified shoreline sits at about 7.3 feet. We spot elevation at nine, and our building anticipates being at 12.2 feet.
How far back?
The setback is beyond the 60-foot or beyond the 50-foot, 55-foot shoreline. I got to get the term right, the waiver line. And those buildings are set back 60 feet. And currently, our building that's adjacent to the shoreline is 15 feet away. And so we are, by demolishing those two buildings, we're taking two buildings back out of that 60-foot setback, and the new buildings will be constructed well beyond that 55-foot waiver line.
Well, that means you'll get about 50 years. But thank you. I think that's concerning about that no more reinforcement of a wall is made. Thank you.
Thank you.
From an economic perspective, your return on investment is a matter of your discretion as the owner. What I find compelling is the fact that you take into consideration and weigh in your concern and your desire to affiliate and associate with the community. I'm also impressed with the fact that you even considered and allowed yourself to take in the input and the feedback from others in the community. I seldom hear the term multi-generational home. That's not a term that is usually associated with building home construction, because the models are basically very Western-oriented, and many of the developments in this area focus on those kinds of structural limitations. But I'd like to commend you on your sensitivity, your willingness to reevaluate, and your openness to suggestion. So good luck on your endeavor, and may you continue to enrich our community with your sense of.
Thank you, thanks.
Berla, go ahead.
Hi, Dottie. Thank you. Hello, Mo from African Asian Association. Thank Steve for the input. The question I didn't ask is, during the permitting process, are you going to have to get a permit for the entire property with all the structures? Or is that going to be done in phases? And if so, how many phases and years between do you anticipate that?
Berla, great question. Two phases. This phase now, we're moving forward as quick as we can on. The second phase requires that more involved EA process, which we're well through that process and will, depending on the outcome of this first application, we will do the second phase right on the heels of this one, the application aspect of it.
And you still don't have an approximate price per square foot? Is that true, Steve?
Berla, I don't, and you have held my feet to the fire on that, which is totally fair. As you asked us to decrease or consider decreasing the size of those units, I am on the horns of a dilemma. Do we do the larger homes with the multi-generational capability? Or do we do the smaller homes, which don't have that multi-generational capacity? But then the rent would be less. So we work through that, we are working through that feasibility right now. Grateful for your feedback. A little bit ungrateful, because it's given us more work to do, but that's okay. We're giving you all work to do. We can do a little bit of work of our own.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Dottie.
Thank you. Go ahead. Local here.
So, that comes from Catherine. I just wanted to see if I can, if we rent.
Can you wait just a second? I think it needs to get a microphone for you.
I can talk really loud.
I know, but.
This is Cap and Tia Tapiis. And we currently rent at that property. He's been there about 15 years. And so went to Steve and his family purchased that property over three years ago. It's been, so they never raised the rent. They actually came and asked us, like, do you guys want, need help on the lower rent? And so he's from the very beginning, since he purchased the property, he had always been concerned about us, the renters, and came and asked us what was our goal for the trees. And asked us, our oldest son and his wife and about their five kids are renting the one-bedroom. And so they only pay $900 rent, we pay $1,250 for our two-bedroom, living there at Fatso Beach. And you're right, we do open it up for the whole community. Everybody talks over to the yard. And I'm just saying, I'm just so grateful, like, after two years, I've been Steve and his honor, because they gave all the time and the effort to ask us, sit down with us for hours, each of the tenants, and how this was their plans, what their dreams, what their hopes. And he's been very, and I am the one that said, I was like, buyers are killing us. I'm here for money. We can't stay here. And he told, it's crazy, you know? And he took that all into consideration and fully switched up, I mean, did huge, like, huge changes to his own personal brand and his wife's, you know, goals and plans for themselves. So I am super appreciative. Still, again, told us and the other renters, said, don't worry, it's going to be here, that we will make sure you guys are safe or taken care of. So just that amount of, like, above I mean ads already, and just listening to us and what we were hoping. And I'm very straightforward, so I told him everything about our community and our struggles and, you know, people coming from the outside and saying they're going to help, or maybe even not even saying they're going to help, which is all hell. And so he took that all into consideration. And I'm just so grateful for him and his honor, and just wanting to give pride to the community. And he was like, just, he was like, I didn't even know this was happening, you know? And I think it's good for us to voice it and say, like, hey, you know, because maybe there are people in a position that can't help, and they just don't know that we need help, you know, housing help. So we're like, help, Steve! Help! So that's like, Cap.
Okay. Thank you very much for making that, sharing that expression support. We appreciate that. Okay. Casey, go ahead real quick.
Just quickly, I'm old and I've been listening to wonderful presentations for decades. Thank you so much, but I am concerned, many people and families have had careful plans, but they haven't worked out, and they've had to sell, and then, or they've had other issues and they've sold, and it's gone to vacation rentals or other things. I just wanted to throw that out there and for the entire community, how can we make sure that? I see online, it says average beachfront rentals per month are $6,000 to $8,000 per month. So we wish you well, but I don't know how we can all be protected. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna stop the discussion now, and we're almost at 30 minutes. And in order to have a timely meeting and timely ending, and we appreciate your presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next presentation is Kuliana Coral Restoration Solutions, Building Resilience Through Community Education and Planning of Nature-Based Systems.
You're on. Okay. Get that PowerPoint coming up, but I'll introduce myself, Man Scapolo Kalani, born and raised by this community. And my father was one of the board members here.
Coach K.
Coach K. I am first and foremost a firefighter, but on the side, I do coral restoration with Kuliana Coral. Restoration, we do coral restoration projects outside Ko'olina, and we are planning projects and partnerships all over the island and Maui, hopefully the other islands as well. Coral restoration for me is something that's important, because one of the greatest aspects of it is it provides food for our communities, and also it also provides coastal protection. As you can see here, it's Ka'ava right there, coming into the ocean. What we have here is an issue with the climate changing, right? Our rivers are all falling into the ocean, and so we need to do something about it. There's a lot of different ideas. What we're trying to do as a group here is find nature-based solutions, so things that look natural, right? There's sand dune restoration is one project that people are doing. We do coral restoration. Renton Island proposed fish pond constructions for the communities as a possible solution. What we do is coral restoration. As coral reefs degrade, so does your coastal protection, your natural coastal protection. So together, our group here, so I'm just one of them. There's also H dot UH and us. And if we're kind of involving Koko High School and a part of this project, but we are applying for a grant. So we did a pre-application. We've been invited to do a full application, and I just wanted to.
Yeah, so aloha, everybody. My name is Ian Keegan-Chima. I also refer to it. Back 40 years ago, I remember teaching summer fun here at Koko, when I was in college. But the thing that was related to this is I was coming up, driving through Ka'ava and couching line. I remember being able to, I used to surf out there. I remember being able to park my car on the ocean side. You can't do that anymore. That was 40 years ago. So in the next 40 years, there's going to be a lot of more changes. And so one of the things that we're trying to do is, we are being invited to submit a federal proposal to the federal government. It's very, very competitive. As you all probably know, federal monies are super competitive. So we put together a team, along with H dot, with Kuliana Corals, and also working with the University of Hawaii. I'm from Pictor, which is the Pacific International Center for High-Tech Research. We're also on Down Prophet. And we help to kind of organize groups to go after bigger opportunities like this. So this is actually funded potentially through the National Fish and Wildlife Fund as well as the National Coastal Resiliency Fund. So these folks fund nature-based types of kind of solutions. So we're putting together a team to try and go after these monies. And so the more support we can get, including the community, the neighborhood community, we can bring those federal monies to Hawaii to actually put to work on looking at how do we protect our coastal areas. So we are actually, we're already meeting with Koko High School, the principal, Donna Binsy there, as well as their AP Environmental Science teacher. So they, we're continuing discussions, but they are very supportive of us working together with them. If this goes forward, we have to submit this proposal by early July. We will not know until by the end of this year, but if we do get selected, if we're, our abilities are, you know, really kind of challenging, but we would potentially start in January of next year. We would actually start working with Koko High School a little bit, because the school year had already been started. So what we would do would be to continue to restart that project with them in the new school year in August 2025. This would be for two years. This project would go on for two years. So what would be nice is that we get an opportunity to work with the students, work with them to teach them about and expose them to nature-based solutions, but also work with the community. And we've done this before with Waipahu High School, Wainai High School, and other schools around the state, to incorporate students into projects so that, so we can bring relevance to their education, but also teach the students how to be the folks that help, in my opinion, to bring people together. So I was trained by my teacher, like, how do we bring people together on these very difficult issues? Because this is a long-term issue, and that's why we want to incorporate the students into these projects. It's because we will long be gone, and they're the ones that are going to have to continue the work. Because if you're going to do nature-based solutions, it will take a long time to implement those solutions. You know, you can do things quick, but that doesn't mean that's best for nature. And so I also used to work for Ocean at one of the biggest coastal ocean engineering companies, Sharon White before. But this is kind of the long-term plan. It's only the first phase. So this is a kind of resiliency assessment plan that eventually would lead to eventually, like, phase four would be an actual implementation. But it starts first with this kind of initial planning with the community, community building, and finding out, just like previously speakers, like, we need to find out what the community knows and where those issues are, so that we can better work with the community to develop these solutions.
Are you going to say anything more?
My name is Brandon T. I'm in charge of, well, actually, I was never part of shoreline stuff, but actually I'm in charge of geotechnical slope stability, rockfall, and pavement design. But somehow I got the shoreline program. In any case, when I got the program, we were looking at what we're doing. There's a lot of different things we're doing. We're doing short-term emergency work, and we're not doing it the correct way, because we cannot excavate or anything, so we just have to dump rocks. Then we have this midterm projects that we're trying to get off soon. But I, we don't really, I don't really like that idea, because we're not really addressing the long-term situation. And I kind of don't like the thing about trying to move the road in, because it's a lose-lose situation. We're trying to, I'm trying to see if there's another way out. And then one of the things that, after looking through this thing a lot, we were looking, I'm looking more at what we can do for the coral reef. Because, you know, there's also this thing that, I don't know if you guys are aware, that they're doing stuff at Darkoa, where they're going to be putting in the perforated structure with coral. And so that's kind of the thing that got me interested in doing something different like that. But interestingly enough, some people don't want any of us to touch the coral or try to upgrade the coral. It surprised me. So basically, what we're trying to do is find out if the community really wants it or not. So we have different efforts that we're trying to do at the same time. So it's not that we're just trying one way. We're doing midterm, like I said, the emergency stuff. We're going to file out different things. In fact, I'm working with Ian Masterson. We're looking at this fish pond alternative at Ko'olua area, and that we think that could accrete sand. But the other thing we're looking at too is this idea of the long term. And then we're trying to find out if we can, if this community would be interested in that. And there are certain advantages doing that. Obviously, if the sea level gets above the road level, then. Obviously, if the sea level gets above the road level, then there's nothing you can do. But as far as the thing splashing over and how far it reaches over, there's something you could do about it. And I don't think we were, I know there's discussions. And every time we have these meetings, there's some people saying that we should just make a wall or something like that. But then we're actually, by law, we're not supposed to. And and then that would mess up the the nature, the natural effects. So that's why I think we should be looking for something like a win-win situation. And if we upgraded the coral and we did some of the things that we're thinking about, it it's very intensive as far as the the planning and the permitting required. But in the end, it might be a win-win situation because we don't want to end up making an area that is that looks too engineered. And so we're trying to come up with other alternatives at the same time, trying to address the immediate situation. So so I think what we're trying to do is because we noticed that there's a lot of things we can't get it through the permitting and through the Board of Natural Resources, but we, without having community support. And so I think that's, because it's a facility that everyone has to use, then we're thinking we're going to have to make sure that everybody is on board on this. And that's why we were here today and we're trying to come through on something to address this. I think this is something also that our representative had looked into, Kirigawa wanted, but that kind of fell through that that legislature. But we're still trying to see what we can do about this sort of thing. So we put in together this this thing called, I don't know why we write things like that, but it's be a result. I don't know if I should read through it all, but I also have copies of it. Did you guys get a copy of it before? I I made hard copies if you guys wanted.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see. I've got to tell you something. I am tickled pink that you're doing this. I read the whole RFP. I'm so jealous. I'm so happy that you got it, that. I know it's an invitation, I know it's the first step, but that's a really strong thing to get that invitation. So.
Should I read it all? It's going to take a while.
But but we don't need to do that. I've got to tell you something. This, this is the best thing that could happen. I'm curious, how big an area are you going to focus on?
I, we're looking.
Is it all of Ko'olua? Is it Kualuku or what?
For the planning process, we're looking at, you know, from Kualua up to Ha'ula, but we're not as far as.
From Kualuku to Ha'ula?
No, to Ha'ula.
Sure the roads are exposed.
Roads are exposed because that's, that's where our, our.
From, from Kualua.
To Ha'ula.
Okay, that's perfect.
And so, but there, there's other reasons for, for, for me wanting to do it that way because there's other things that get exposed if we try to do something different. You know, there's a lot of aged water supply water mains. And I don't want to get, get too close to that thing and then, because if we, if something happens to that, then DOT is going to have to pay for that.
You're going to go through this big planning process. That's what you're going to start. This is phase one, then there's two, then there's three, then there's four. And I think, you know, this is long-term, like we said, but it's going to change this whole coastline if you can be successful. And I'm really, I just think this is great. I, I vote yes, and I want to share this with the whole community. I want to get this out so you guys, but please do a good job on that application.
The other thing I wanted to mention too, just is that, which I'm really trying to push for this, this coral thing to move forward because there's also a push from the DOD to move all their coral experts to Kua'ajula and take whatever we're going to do at, at Konahe Marine Base and then go to Kua'ajula after that. But we want to keep some of that expertise in body and want to do something here that would be. But we, we need the support too that other people would be okay with that because some people are just saying that they don't want us to touch the coral reef. But I think at some point, we're going to have to, it's, it's.
We're going to lose it.
We're going to, we're starting to lose some of it because of the sedimentation, there's other issues and stuff.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm equally enthusiastic, but anyway, I'm extremely delighted with this. I've seen the coral regenerative work in, in, in Kaurabas, member regenerative work in the Ap'ions. So there's contaminants, fruit security issues, contaminants, red fruit. So much of this has been going on throughout the entire region, but I don't think it's ever been put together in, in sort of one package in which you're, you're benefiting from much of the work that's been out there. But I'm just, I just need a little bit of, for my own edification. Is the, is your organizational structure, is this Pictor submitting the proposal or who is it?
Pictor's.
Pictor's, are you the leader? So we is who, Pictor?
He is, should we? He love.
Yeah, I mean, Bruce, not an apparent. What's your name in the organization?
Well, I'm with DOT.
You know, I am.
I know that. Who's, who's we? Well, we, it, it started because I had interacted with Pictor and then we talked about trying to get other people involved. And I have a lot of research projects with, with UH. So I'm working with, on different ideas of, of trying to cut back wave energies and stuff like that. And, and so then we decided that, you know, maybe we're going to try something different like this. And then that's how we got the group together. Now, I'm not sure if we're going to, if we're getting the, all of the funding, but we're trying to see if there's, if even if we don't get it, if DOT can flip the bill to see.
No, no, I understand because I'm, I'm retired from the university. So I'm running with the Office of Vice President for Research and Innovation. So I understand the point I'm trying to make is who?
Who's in charge?
Who's in charge? I mean, if you do it, I mean, who does it go to?
To Pictor first.
This is a Pictor project.
We'll be the principal investigators and project managers. We'll have subs. We are experienced at managing fiscal federal monies.
That's wonderful. I'll just say, oh, how are you?
And I just represent one idea that can be brought to the community. And ultimately, what we're trying to do is just come to the community. Say, these are possibilities for a solution to protect our roadways. What do you guys want?
No, I, I understand and I, I love it. I'm, I'm just trying to get.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, Pictor.
We're in different groups and just together.
That's a good for me.
The mission of entities, but then the lead agency in this coalition is Pictor.
Yes.
Okay.
Because none of us have that expertise to do it all.
No, I understand. I just.
No, that's great. That's great. Believe it in God, go, go for it. Yeah.
Go for it.
And we love it. Everybody says go for it. Yes, go for it.
Alfred has.
Can you please say your name?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Alfred May. And I don't even know which district.
I is two.
Two, oh, District Two, Alfredly, District Two. So my question is on the, the grant. You mentioned a couple of different things. So you mentioned going into schools and starting a project. Is that everything is based on being able to get this grant?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Or what, or the piece parts that are ready in motion and you need the grants in order to actually do, you know, coral regenerative work? Or is it also going to the schools? I just, it just wasn't clear. I just.
I, I think individually, our organizations are incredible things in different parts of the community. But we're coming together to focus specifically on this particular community, bringing our expertise. So right now, I'm not yet, I'm working with Koko High School in a different, but not, not on this project and not in coral restoration. Do our nature-based solutions. So this would give us at least our organization's opportunities to work together, to work with my Koko High School. My part is actually school side, working with the schools. The Kono side will be on the coral restoration side, you know, running some DOT highways. So he'll be on the highway perspective, right, this project. But right now, like, we're not, we're not funded or I don't have anything that actually allows me to, to work with the school around the situation like this. So that's why this funding is an opportunity to give us.
Do you know how much you're going to ask for?
I think we're actually, I think the budget keeps increasing because we want to do more, but at the same time, we're trying to manage that because then it makes us less committed. Again, so it's super, it's kind of like, how do we do the maximum with, without asking for like the maximum, right? So.
But now this first, it's, it's two years of it that's planning, right? I mean, this, this thing is a long-term effort and, and all the stages have to be accomplished to get to the end point.
We may not yet ask to. So we went through the phase one. Doesn't necessarily mean.
You get phase two.
It's, it'll be.
But it's a step. It's a step in the right direction.
That's your support, baby.
Aye, aye, aye. Atalina.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Atalina. I'm the rep for Kohuku. I do, I'm grateful for this project because it's something that has been an issue in Ko'olala for such a long time. And I'm grateful that we are looking at na- natural solutions to protecting our, our roadways. My one concern is that in Ko'olala, we have many Aina-based community organizations such as Ho'ala Kupono Aina. We also have Nurture Cultivate in Kaua'i. So these are existing, we also have Halemoa. We have the Hano Hano family who has their farms and are educating students from Koko High School. So these are existing organizations and it would be amazing if you guys could collaborate with these existing Aina base as well as ocean-based organizations to help in coming up with solutions to, to climate change within Ko'olala. And they already have, like, right now Nurture Cultivate Haua'i as well as Ho'ala Aina Kupono. They have a OPO program running where they work at the Kahana Fish Pond in the Lo'i as well as Taula Beach Park. So my only suggestion is that we, we have community-led initiatives. No kako, na kako, for the community, by the community. I know you folks are part of amazing organizations that focus on a broader, like you said, you guys are focusing within Oahu and you guys have some projects on Maui. So maybe something like a community advisory board or council where we can have people, our community leaders come and help to provide solutions. And I've already heard a lot of amazing things where you guys will not move forward unless community, community wants these solutions. And we already have two amazing community leaders, Dottie and Tusi, who've already said that this is something that we've been waiting for, for a long time. So my only suggestion is to work, work with our community, Aina-based community organizations because they're amazing. They have a lot of mana'o. They've been doing this work for a while and it's part of their ohana. They, they have generational ancestral knowledge about all of these, these places. They have kuliana to these lands. So mahalo.
Thank you, Atalina, for that. And I just wanted to comment and say that this is why we're here. We're, we're here reaching out to the community and looking for suggestions like that from you. So we will go ahead and forward. I have already been talking with the Hano Hano family. They are my friends and they allowed us to go and check out their farm that they're restoring. And we went across the street and checked out their coral reefs just to do a, a site recon to see what we can do to help out. And they are welcoming us. And if you want to move forward with projects, we will be in talks with them.
I want to say too, like, this first phase is really a phase where we have a disturbing mindset. So we really want to go on, we really want to understand, to work with the community, understand what's already here, what's already working well, who is already doing its good work and then see how we can best apply and support the work that we're doing. And we don't want to wreck it. We really want to complement things. That's great.
That's a great idea.
Sounds good. Let's do it. Julio Ha'ulas right here manages this.
Oh, there's questions.
Yes, if anyone else.
I'm just making a comment. And we would like to open the doors here to you anytime we want to use this facility to, to do anything. We have twenty nonprofit partners here that work together, providing all kinds of great services. So, you know, we welcome you to come use these facilities, however, and this, you know, we want to support what you're doing. Okay.
Did someone else want to say something?
Okay, anyone else?
Are we voting?
You want, you want to make a comment? Yes.
I'm Akaya, president of Koko. Hi, Dottie.
Hi.
I must be, you guys must look at me like Lucas. But I'm going to comment on a Back to the Future. Between two thousand and five and two thousand and ten, Kaukoo spearheaded an ocean outlet monitoring program with the City County of Honolulu. It included Tarobe Ocean Outlets, Ha'uku Ocean Outlets, Laia Ocean Outlets, Ha'ula Ocean Outlets. Other communities chose not to participate. The end result is once was published internally within the City County of Honolulu. There's two issues that it pointed out. One was people greetings at the shoreline and ocean outlets. The second was rainwater, water contamination. Very high issues. Now, as a comment, if we don't address these two issues within the communities, then coral will have a very hard time to recover. In speaking, speaking specifically about Ha'ula, well, let me back up to Kaukoo. And Tarobe, Ha'uku and Laia responded with sewer system treatment. So the seafull issue in those communities were eliminated and reduced significantly in measuring fickle at the ocean outlet. That helped tremendously. Laia did a good turnaround as well. They were, they had high measures of people. They put in their system. They're doing very well. That's a good start. They're working on their flood system. That's a good start. So those ingredients, like the old Hawaiians, Ma'upata Makai, has to start there. And just to go and do coral without adjusting the inland contributors, good or bad, it's going to be difficult. Unfortunately, Ha'ula's seafull is more measurable, not at the ocean outlet, but how, how the severity of the calm is in the seafulls and their tidal. They go up and down with the tide. So your fickle matter is, is, is going to be high. Your correction of this problem is going to be difficult, but if this problem is an igniter. But if this problem is an igniter of a sewer system for Ha'ula and out the coastline, then we cannot let agency bury it.
That's right.
We cannot. You know, but you guys can throw out all the questions you have, but Ma'uka Makai is the president. And, and for flood runoff, displacement issues are recharging the aqua for, and the runoff isn't getting to the ocean as flagrant as they used to be. So retention basins is, is, is deep. So I think you guys kind of need to know that upfront. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. And then that's absolutely true, everything you said. But that's how I feel. I feel that. I am only one piece of a thousand-piece puzzle. I can only do what, what I know how to do. And I reach out to every organization to do the things that I don't know how to do. So that's why we're here. We're reaching out for help and community support.
You are to be commended.
And I just have one little piece that I'll talk to you after the meeting that I, I'd like to suggest could also help in Ha'ula. And I think we tried to do this 10 years ago, but no, everybody knocked us back. So, um, and, and that is restores the wetland area and to help with the whole thing with runoff. And I think it could be some real good progress here in Ha'ula that way. And we're working with, you know, the state in trying to get better programs to support Ha'ula citizens, to make that transition from cesspools. And, but it's really, really hard because it's just unaffordable for a lot of people in Ha'ula. So, but thank you so much. No, we're not voting. I think we're just all saying aye. We can say aye. You want to vote?
So are you voting for the resident?
Yes.
Okay, so I need to make motion in a second.
I motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
I second.
Um, want to do roll call or?
Yeah, roll call. Lauren.
Lufte Mee, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Say your name.
Rebecca.
Rebecca.
Allison.
Yes, aye. Dadi, aye. And Atalina.
Atalina, aye.
And is Sunny still there?
Aye, Sunny, aye.
Thank you, Sunny.
Okay, ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, let's. Okay, committee report. Given the late hour, I'm gonna say we're not gonna do any reporting, except we're moving forward with our 5.4 million effort to start work on the resilience hub as soon as possible, as soon as we can get it through permitting. We are closing out with Fonzie and RBA this month in June. And so that will be published very soon. Other reports? Okay.
Oh wait, Atalina.
Atalina, you have a report?
I just want to report on the stroke education workshop that we had with Department of Dade Point Health. UH Hawaii. We had a great turnout. We had 37 people from Ko'olau come in and learn more, more about stroke and how they can live healthier lives to prevent stroke within themselves and their families. We also had an Alzheimer's and dementia study done by BYU Provo this past week. And we had an amazing turnout as well. We had 68 people from our community come out and get, provide blood samples or saliva samples and get educated about Alzheimer's and dementia. So I just wanted to report on that. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? And we'll say goodnight.
Oh, yeah. Minutes.
Oh, yeah. Approval. Minutes, aye. You want to say anybody who's here? Yeah. Any committee announcements? Yes.
Long again Ralph Makayao, Kohuku Community President. At the mayor's town hall meeting, I made a comment with the Turtle Bay Resort Master Development Plan. And at that meeting, I accomplished my purpose, notifying the mayor and district council member Matt Wire that in reality, I follow the mayor's office, Matt, the council district members' office, and all of the city permitting agencies, accountable for not keeping the community advised of the Turtle Bay master plan developed. Way back when in 1987, the Unilateral Agreement included the city to have, included the regional community to have a seat at the planning table. The enforcement of that was to be done by the city council and enforcement was Department of Community. What I'm saying is along those as permits who are being approved, nobody in the city notified the community that this was going on. Community therefore, for more than 40 years, had no say so in permits afforded development. I also concluded at the tail end of that presentation that in 40 years, not one community benefit was built for the community as agreed upon. So tonight, after the town hall meeting, I scripted a call point specific to Matt, the council, district council member Matt Wire, to have his office staff and the mayor's staff review in a different light or in an informed light the Unilateral Agreement of 1987. But in the same breath, I'm saying that the community benefits then do not necessarily befitting the communities now. So not only is there need to catch up, if it was to be a benefit to communities, there is a need to update. And I'm here to say that when I'm putting pressure on the city agencies, if you were at the meeting, both responses were, the mayor said, I'm getting our unilateral agreement lawyer involved. And Matt says, I'm getting the lawyers, unilateral lawyers involved. I don't want to talk legal. I want to offer a presentation to any one of your interested community associations or community groups, just to hear what, what I scripted for Matt Wire. And, and, and I'm willing, I'm kind of old, so I'm kind of frail. I don't have the get up and go that the youngsters have to go every meeting, every day. But I will make time to respond to you, committee member, request to at least show you a structure so that we can begin and be our, at least a page, a starting point, get some cohesion. The outcome is to have the interest of the community in Ko'olau as well as North Shore to agree on a fair representation at the seat at the table. And that is my message tonight. Thank you.
Oh, just a question. It's 1987 document, a document agreement for community participation?
It is a documented that was signed by the landowner, the developer, city and.
Is there such a documented agreement? One as I assume.
I would recommend to you that you go to Matt's office and get the copy of the unilateral agreement that they're reviewing. That would be the most consistent beginning for any inquiry, if you, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Don't ask me what Ralph said this.
Right, as long as at least it exists.
Yeah. And I'm just scripting against that document so Matt can cut to the chase.
Wow.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention.
Yes.
Again and again.
Well, stick around because I don't recognize too many people here. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. What?
Yes.
Salas?
Yes.
Uh, Chris, please speak.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity. I just want to announce two events real quick and then I'll get off, get out of your hair. On Sunday, August 25th, there's gonna be a bike race around the Oahu, starting and ending in Huai Kai. It's less than 100 people and the front pack of riders will have a police escort. So there shouldn't be too much hassle with that. And then on Sunday, September 29th is the Honolulu Century Ride, which will be starting and ending in Kapalawani Park. But I'll drop some links in chat and my email if anyone has any questions or comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next thing is public input, community announcements. Anyone have a community announcement?
My name is Johnny Aguirre and I wanted to introduce myself as the Republican candidate for the House Representative for this district, District 47. Uh, I decided to run and I'm coming out and meeting the community. And this is a great board meeting, very informative, very well-run. I'd like to offer my email address to anybody who would like to contact me. And that is aloha@JohnnyDistrict47.com. It's J O H N N Y. Uh, and I would love to meet my neighbors and talk about your ideas, talk about your concerns. And it doesn't look like Casey Connors is online anymore. But if someone can relate to her, that I'm very interested in sitting down with her and having a lemonade and talking to her, I would really appreciate it. But I just want to let you guys know I'm running for office for this district. Thank you very much. Johnny Aguirre. How do you spell it? A G U I R R E.
Johnny, your home is?
I live in Pu'ukai.
Yeah.
Yes. So I've came down here to visit my neighbors and, and get to know you guys. Thank you very much.
Sure. Email again aloha@JohnnyDistrict47.
Dot com.
Dot com.
Yes. And I have a brand new Instagram. Haven't even have, I don't even have one follower yet. So my Instagram is JohnnyDistrict47 as well. And one of you can be my first follower. You're really into it.
Johnny, why are you running?
I'm running to want to make a difference. My, I retired a, a year ago and I've been able to absorb what's really happening around me. And I want to see a better life for my daughter and along with that, I want to see a better life for the community. And there, you can put everything under umbrella. Better life for people financially, as far as the government goes, responsibility, accountability, and a huge reduction in wasteful spending. Uh, so there's a multitude of things that, that we could talk about. And I've heard a lot of the issues here today. Uh, and I'm running because I need to make a difference and I want to be a voice.
And what's your career been?
I was a firefighter in California for a total of 27 years. A volunteer, part-time, full-time. I've been a public servant my whole life and after I retired, I realized I'm not done. You know, I, I love the beach, but I'm not a beachgoer. I, I like to be a part and take action and fix things. That's been my, my job for most of my, my adult life, basically. So I used to be a firefighter and I'm retired now. Yeah. Yes.
I'm Lauren. Tell them we gave you a chair.
I've lived here a total of 10 years. Uh, and I, I will say that I've traveled back and forth to California while I was working. I don't recommend that to anybody. That wasn't a smart idea, but I did it for my family. And I've been retired for a year and I've been able to absorb really what's happening around me. So 10 years. You know us? Well, thank you very much. Nice being you. Great board meeting and I hope to see you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, announcements, approval, board minutes, we've had already. No? Definitely, I didn't dream that. Okay.
Do we need a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. And now we're going to adjourn. Good night, everybody. Good day, everybody.
Thank you, Daddy.
Thank you.
Where and when are the Hoka meetings?